Good evening. Welcome to the June 11th, 2024 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. If the city clerk could please take the role.
Nichols?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Esslinger?
Here.
Flohm?
Here.
Uh, Bulo is excused absent. Stevenson?
Here.
Mughawar?
Here. Leading us in the invocation this evening will be Councilmember Nichols.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. Mayor decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
Tonight, we have a student from Martin Luther School here to help us with the pledge. Noah Holm is here to help, uh, help us with that. Noah, if you wouldn't mind joining me up there.
I would like to read this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Republicans, one nation under God, immune visible with liberty and justice.
Again, we have Noah Holm here from Martin Luther School. Appreciate you coming out tonight, Mom, for bringing him to, to help us lead us in the pledge. Thank you very much. Um, you want to tell us, uh, maybe favorite subject, favorite teacher over there at, at Martin Luther?
Probably PE for my favorite subject. Um, my favorite teacher is my main teacher, which her name is Brooke Buckford.
A nice shout out to Brooke over at Martin Luther School. Thank you again for helping us. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing. Resolution 24-301, approve submittal of 2024 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Plan Commission recommends approval. That'll be first reading. Second reading, approve submittal of 2024 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Plan Commission recommends approval. Third and final reading, if you're here to speak on this. Resolution 24-301, approve submittal of 2024 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Plan Commission recommends approval. I see no one coming up to speak. We'll consider the public hearing closed, and I'll take a motion in a second on this.
So move.
Any discussion? Kelly, if you don't, or Ms. Nyforth, uh, if you don't mind, I just had two small ones, um, pretty easy, hopefully. Um, there was some timing, within the, the supporting material, there's some timing things. Um, the, the plan year already started, but we're just now getting to the, the approval of it. Can you, I, I know why, I think, but can you talk to us about why there's some timing things here?
Sure, absolutely. And I just want to introduce, we have Emily Tardif, our Economic Development Specialist in Community Development, who administers our CDBG program.
Welcome.
So Emily's here to answer any questions I cannot. Um, but yes, the timing, our program year actually runs from May 1st till April 30th. Um, so we wait to hear from the federal government on, you know, what type of allocation we'll be receiving. Typically, we hear from the feds in late February. Unfortunately, this year, we did not hear till early mid-May. So we have 60 days, once we get that notice, to, um, have all of our public hearings and our comment period, and, um, it starts that day we get the notice. Um, we also have notices that we have to put in the paper. So we had a notice in the paper, um, so we had lead time with that. Uh, 30-day public comment period, it was at Plan Commission last week, and then it's at council tonight. And after tonight, um, if everything goes well, then we can submit it to, um, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to review, and, um, hopefully then they approve it and we can receive the funds.
And then just one other clarifying one, uh, because within the plan, it calls out certain dollar amounts for certain activities, uh, going through the budget process. Is this things where you've already identified this is how we're going to spend it on these exact projects, or is it really more, here's these pools of money, and then when, when something pops up, this is how we're going to pay for it?
Little bit, yes and no. Um, we actually do a survey with the community, a lot of our community partners, a lot of nonprofits, public service providers, um, to see what their needs are, so we can make sure that we are, um, you know, aligning the goals in the action plan and the allocations with what the community needs. Um, we look at all of our city plans, city strategic plan. Um, so a big one that really popped up was the affordable housing. Um, so tonight, uh, when you look at some of the different categories, um, we have funds in there to install, um, our plan is to install public utilities in the Farmington area for workforce, um, housing. Um, we have funds in there, once, um, Washington School, once we purchased that, uh, to demolish the school for the workforce housing. Um, we have funds for public service providers. Um, we have some admin funds, and we also have funds for housing rehab too, because that's a really, um, popular program that we have, and we want to continue to have funds. And then also, we have funds for those lead pipe replacements for the folks that are very low income that need some assistance with that.
Thank you for the additional information. Appreciate it. So any other discussion or questions? I see none. If you'll take the role on 24-301.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next up, we have citizen statements to council. I don't have anyone registered to speak to us this evening. Seeing no one jumping up, we'll move right on to consent agenda. I'll take a motion in a second for consent.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember, um, Larson wants to, uh, we're going to poll number 24 and number 29. Those are resolutions 24-321 and resolution 24-326 for separate votes. Uh, Councilmember Nichols?
I just want to add before we vote, um, item number 11, uh, where the city is requesting an urban forestry grant. Um, I just want to say that a lot of times the consent agenda items will get skipped over, and people don't pay a ton of attention to them. Um, I'm super excited that we're applying for this money. I think anytime we can apply for free money, we should. Um, but especially here, where we're focused on improving our urban canopy and urban forests in Oshkosh. I think that's just going to help us. And, and just quickly, um, the DNR says a well-managed urban forest provides services such as energy conservation, economic vitality, improved air quality, reduced stormwater runoff, carbon sequestration, and enhanced beautification. So I'm excited about it. I just wanted to call that one out specifically, uh, and thank you for letting me do that.
Absolutely. If there's no other questions or discussion, we'll take the role on consent minus 24-321 and minus 24-326.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Uh, resolution 24-321, approve renewal liquor licenses.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Larson?
Just for fidelity, my liquor licenses are in there, so I shouldn't vote on them.
Sounds about right. I see no other buttons being pressed, so you'll take, uh, the role on 24-321.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Present.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried 5-1, present.
Resolution 24-326, approve special Class B licenses.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Larson?
Just for fidelity, I'm contracted to work at the events with those licenses.
She'll take the role on 24-326.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Present.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried 5-1, present.
Next up, we have pending ordinances. Uh, ordinance 24-328, amend Chapter 2, Article 2 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to the election and election officials to establish a Board of Absentee Ballot Canvassers, central count location for absentee ballots. We have two individuals registered to speak. Uh, Ms. Caroline Pansky first, and then, uh, Ms. Susan Ponick right after. Welcome.
All right. Stand a minute. Uh, Caroline Pansky, 1069 West Ninth Avenue here in Oshkosh. Uh, good evening, Council Staff Mayor. Um, just a little bit of background for those of you that have not seen me either at your polling location or over at 19 East Irving. I have been a poll worker in some form for over 10 years now. I started off as just a regular old poll worker, um, over at the senior center. I was quickly trained as a co-chair, served as a co-chair, um, then I was a regular chair, just serving, um, on my own. Um, then I started helping out in the Clerk's Department, uh, working on absentee ballots, just filing, registering, uh, you name it. Whatever they needed, I was popping in to help out with. Uh, approximately, well, just over a year ago, um, I became an employee down in the Clerk's Office, a flex term employee. I kind of come and go around the elections. Um, I've seen this process for a while. I've been a part of this process for a while. I've seen it, and we can prove it with our key performance indicators, that the amount of absentee ballots has only been increasing, and I would anticipate the trend to do so. This is one of the biggest tasks that our chairpeople have on Election Day, is processing these absentee ballots. By alleviating that and establishing a central count here at City Hall, the Clerk's Department can take that task from them and let them run their polling site. They can address the issues that occur on Election Day. And as you can imagine, we're going into a pretty heavy couple of elections here. So they might have other things to worry about on Election Day than opening up an absentee ballot and putting it through the machine. If we can take that from them and do it here, which I have a little bit of experience doing it, and I can guarantee you that we can get it done, I, I can tell you my clerk over there has absolute faith in her department as well, and I hope you do too. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Ponick? Welcome.
It's funny that it should be the two of us, because actually Caroline, Caroline trained me as, um, an election worker. Then I too quickly became a co-chair, and then she got stuck on some vacation, and I became the chair by myself. So, um, what Caroline said is absolutely true, but I'm going to say a couple of, um, different exam, uh, add on to what she had to say, and I should introduce myself. Sue Ponick, 2610 West 20th Avenue, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. Thank you. Um, so it's not just opening that envelope. When you get those envelopes, you have to check the addresses on the, the envelopes. You have to check to make sure that there is, um, a witness signature. Now, this is all done at, at the Clerk's Office, but we do another check. We make sure that the ones that they sent us are all on the list that we get, so it takes time. And it usually, and everything we do, we do in twos, so that it's not just one person. So if I'm working on that with somebody else, if there's a person that comes in and cannot come into, or a person that cannot come in to vote, and we have to do a curbside vote, I'm sending two more people out there, which means there's nobody really manning the polling, um, books, which are no longer books, they're Badger books, which whoever did that, thank you very much. Anyway, so we move on from that to the fact that we have people that have questions. So we have a greeter, they can answer the questions, but if it's something very significant, it's got to be the chief inspector who has to answer those questions. We're on the phone to City Hall all the time. By having this central location, it's going to take all of that worry of the absentee ballots out of our hands. It will be done by people who are not being interrupted regularly, so they're going to be sitting there, opening them, and having a flow, where we get flow, we stop. We get flow, we stop. So I can't tell you how much this is going to save efficiency, it's going to save on our, our workers and the headaches at the end of the night. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else registered to speak on this. I'll take a motion in a second.
Move it.
Second. Discussion. Councilmember Flohm, followed by Councilmember Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a couple of questions for, uh, the city clerk, just so people understand at home. Uh, so under the current system that we use, uh, on Election Day, each absentee ballot that is at City Hall or at the early voting location goes out to its respective precinct. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so when that happens, uh, over the course of the day, as the two citizen statements have mentioned, um, there are stop, start, stop, start, in order to count those, depending on how busy a polling site may be. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then under this new system, the ballots are just going to stay here at City Hall. It's going to be counted right here. It's going to be accessible to the public, uh, just like any other polling site would be. And so the ballots aren't moving, they're staying here, they're counted here throughout the course of the day. They're not interrupted by, you know, flow and rushes, you know, early in the morning, during lunch, in the afternoon, so they can just keep going all day, and so it's a more efficient and secure process.
Correct. And it also eliminates more hands touching and delivering.
So it's a simpler chain of custody.
Definitely.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's exactly what I wanted to reiterate. I mean, uh, this is good governance. This is, uh, us becoming more efficient, uh, saving time, saving money for the taxpayer, and I think it's going to make for a lot quicker election, it's going to make for a lot more efficient election. So, uh, fully in favor of having a central count location. And, uh, uh, thank you for, uh, Councilman Flohm for going through those, those reasons why. Councilmember Esslinger?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to thank the city manager, staff, and anyone else that has brought this forward. Um, you know, I know all the years that I've been on the council, and all the council members I've dealt, served with, we all direct the staff to come up with new ways that we can get things done and make things simpler for, for the citizens. So, kudos. Great job.
And definitely a shout out to Deputy Androsco. She's the one that really, when we were brainstorming, brought it up. So I appreciate her.
Um, I'm, I'm a little conflicted on this. Number one is, I do believe that this method and this process probably is easier than what we're doing. However, um, a lot of times the perception of what happens kind of overrides the fact. I know it sounds terrible. Um, but the perception, and, you know, I've been contacted, and I think the rest of the council members have been too, uh, by, uh, poll workers that said it's a great idea, but it's really not needed. Uh, so I don't know. I mean, I'm not a poll worker. Um, the perception is, you're taking this from a place where I go to the polls, and I can see those ballots, and you have a Republican, and you have a Democrat, and they're opening these up, and they're putting them in there, to the ballots now are going to City Hall. And while that is, people can come down and watch that process, the reality is, unless you're a crazy person like me, that's probably not going to happen. So I just don't, I mean, can you allay my fears of how the public would perceive that you're taking this away from the normal way of doing it to, I don't want to say a dark corner or somewhere. I mean, clearly, that's not it. But again, it's that perception.
I wish I could say something to alleviate, but it, it will be here in these two rooms. This is our central count location. Um, we will definitely be less handling of the ballots, moving them, because currently what we do is, we, in the Clerk's Office, we sort them, we bag them, and then we have to deliver them. So we had a snowstorm at our last election, and we kind of devied up our last delivery, and it was quite dangerous when we went out. So that's going to take any of that away in regards to our poll workers and delivery. Um, but it's going to be wide open. There's observing, um, locations that we will have, just like at polling locations. Um, we will, exactly, thank you. We will have, um, representatives from both parties working up here in this location. It's going to be an exact duplicate of another polling location. The only thing that they won't see here is foot traffic, people coming in to vote.
So on the, so this is an activity that will happen only on Election Day?
Only on Election Day. By law, that's the only day that we can process absentee ballots.
And there will be a Republican, and there will be a Democrat official?
Yes.
Anytime that activity occurs?
Yes. Each site, um, it is my intention to have each site staffed with two co-chair persons, um, working on this election, definitely for November, and those chairpersons will be in charge of that polling location.
Okay. Well, good job, because I, I came here, I fully planned on voting no on this, uh, but I think you've done a very good job of explaining, and you've allayed my fears. I was one of the people that, you're taking it away, but now that you've, uh, you know, discussed it and talked about how exactly this works, I, I think it's pretty good. So again, thank you.
Good comments and good questions so far. A lot of ones I had on my list, so I appreciate my fellow council members for, for asking them and taking it's, uh, taking the, the task always seriously and, and asking good ones. Um, you just touched on it, State of Wisconsin does not allow for processing of absentee ballots before Election Day. So it's got to be done on that day. Um, it's less hands touching them, it's less traffic, it's more secure. Um, to those at home, to those listening, you know, your local clerks, city of Oshkosh, we've got a fantastic clerks department and, and poll workers who, who love showing up on Election Day. It's long days, but they love what they do, they're great at it. Um, but clerks throughout this, the state and this country, they administer your, your elections. And in terms of security, this is, this is a step in our direction to make sure that, um, um, that process remains as secure as possible, remains as easy as possible. And on polling day, possibly, you can make, make your way through those lines a little bit quicker, because, um, they've got the right amount of staff always at the tables waiting for you to come in and, and do your, uh, do your duty to, to cast your ballot. So, love the idea, love the, the work that staff has put into it. Echo my, my fellow council members, kudos, and, uh, appreciate the efforts on, on trying to improve this. So with that, uh, if you'll take the role on ordinance 24-328.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
Ordinance 24-329, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district to suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay for properties located at the Jackson Street, south of Snell. Plan Commission recommends approval. I'll take a motion in a second.
So move.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none, if you'll take the role.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
We have a new ordinance this evening. No anticipated action on this one. Ordinance 24-330, amend Section 2-24 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to the authority of the city attorney. There's no action anticipated on this. This will be on next, uh, meeting's agenda for, uh, discussion and approval, or a vote. New Resolution 24-331, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for a drive-through restaurant located at 555 South Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. I see none. Please take the role.
Nichols?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Esslinger?
Aye.
Flohm?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried six.
That concludes our action items for this evening. On to council discussion, direction to city manager, and future agenda items. Uh, first up, uh, council, uh, council request through the city manager. Don't know if you want to start off?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be happy to start it off. I know, you know, with, with three new council members and five council members with a year or less, there's a lot of, you know, information. We had a closed session tonight, a lot of it was background information. Um, I'd want to draw your attention to, uh, the, the June edition of the municipality magazine, which I know you, you should have all received, if, if it may already be in your packet right there. Uh, and on page nine, which I put in the packet, uh, is a, a great article. It's written by the former, uh, Assistant Director of the League, as well as a legal counsel for the League, Kurt Witinski, and just gave us some, some best practices. And I think some of the things I wanted to point out, uh, you know, it's like get, make a point to get to know and trust key staff. I think the, um, uh, the requests that you've made to do, uh, the, uh, orientations have gone over very well. Feedback I'm getting is, you know, a lot of great questions and everything. Sir, I really appreciate that, because that, you get to understand some of the issues and everything, and obviously the on-ramp to, to getting familiarized with that stuff is a big deal. So, um, you know, in terms of requests of staff, you know, I ask that you, you know, go through me, because there's some times, and I think there was a, a complaint recently from a citizen that went to all of you about a bar situation, ultimately became a noise issue. But, you know, we have to make sure it gets sorted to the right department. Is it a licensing issue? Is it a zoning issue? And at the end, it, it was really a noise issue. So we, you know, we will sort that out across departments, and I'll assign somebody to those things. That's just one example. So I would ask that you continue to go through me so that we can get those done as efficiently as possible. Our job and our obligation to you is to make sure we get back to you as soon as possible. Uh, and oftentimes, it takes some time to go through those things. So ask your indulgence as we do those things. Uh, and, uh, and there's a couple other articles in there as well that I would draw your attention to. Uh, so one is specifically about the different forms of government, uh, specifically council manager form. And then one of the, uh, goals that the council gave for me had to do with libraries. There's a great article in the backend of the, of the edition about libraries. There's been a lot of questions about libraries and jurisdictions, and I think this article does a great job of that. Um, and I encourage you to familiarize yourself with that. Really answers a lot of questions that came up, and Ms. Reshte, our new library director, has been working great with us. So a lot of good stuff in there, uh, but, uh, just wanted to point out some of those things and your indulgence and, you know, contacting me. Um, and, uh, you know, I'm more of a, yeah, to the degree we can talk about issues, give me a call. I'm happy to do that. Mayor, 7:30 this morning said, do you got a minute to chat? Sure, I got a minute to chat. I'm happy to do that, you know, to the degree. Last week was not a good week, uh, because we were doing all the CIPs, but that's not the normal week. The normal week is, you know, I have time, and certainly, anytime between the, the day the agenda goes out and tonight, I'm available. I, I need to avail myself to you as council member. So certainly feel free to contact me if you have any questions. That's really all I had. Just, uh, just encourage you to read the, uh, several articles in this magazine. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
If there's any questions or comments on that, Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah, I, I just, I could just have one question. So it, as, as maybe, um, everyone knows, we, we get the agenda very late in the game. Um, and I, and I think there's been some conversation about how we can improve that process, just so council can have more time to ask the questions that we might have before we come to an, an open meeting like this. Uh, Memorial Day weekend, for example, uh, staff was off, as, as the rest of us were, and I think the comment I made was that we had 10 business hours to ask questions. Um, so I'd love to talk about how we can, and brainstorm, and now's not the time to do it, about how we can have more time to answer those questions and, and see the agenda. Um, but I guess my question for you, city manager, um, happy to, happy to send everything to you, and I, and I'm, I'm sure that I've copied you at least on every request that, that I've made personally. Um, what should be the expected time? Because as you pointed out, a number of us are, are new, and, and we were elected to be new, um, by the people of Oshkosh. So what should we expect as new council members for your response time for some of those questions?
A lot of it depends on the nature of the question. Um, certainly, we have an obligation to check things out, make sure, like the example I used at the bar, whose jurisdiction is it, and what are the facts? So, um, you know, generally, you know, if we can get back to you that we're working on it, at least in acknowledgement, you know, it's, you do something through a customer service, and it says, "Thank you, we've received your order" type of thing, I think we can acknowledge it. I, I don't want to guarantee that you're going to get a, a definitive final answer within 24 hours, but I think it wouldn't be unreasonable to say, "I've assigned it to so-and-so, and they're working on it." And if, if we can do that, that, that would be a great thing. And I, you know, that's a great question. Uh, being very specific, I think that's probably a good week.
I think that'd be very helpful, just because a lot of times, the questions that we're, that we're asking you, we're getting from someone else in the community, and we just need to be able to point to, to say, "We've done our jobs to ask the questions," and say, "You've passed it on to so-and-so at different departments," so they know who to follow up with. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember Flohm, followed by Councilmember Larson.
And just to kind of echo on that, uh, city manager, one of the things that I've been getting a lot of comments on recently, and all of us have, is parking, particularly downtown parking and the recent enforcement change with that. I point to the recent council meeting where we gave direction to you regarding, uh, giving the Transportation Committee an opportunity to take a look at this and see if there are any changes warranted in the parking ordinances. Uh, and so that's what I've been telling residents. I know that I did mention a potential agenda item with you about this as, as, as an update. Uh, I know that that's something that you will probably cover on the outstanding issues section. Uh, but in terms of anything else that we can update residents with outside of, hey, you know, a certain committee or commissioner or board is looking at this, uh, would be appreciated if there's any sort of incremental updates on a, on a hot-button topic, uh, that we know that we're getting questions from residents about. That would be the only other thing I would have to add.
Sure. Um, what I, give me a second, I clicked the wrong button. Now I got to get back. Uh, under outstanding issues, uh, once the council gave me that direction, I automatically put it on outstanding issues. And there was a question, it's like, why is it not going to be till August? I just wanted to give enough lead time on it. Um, I believe Councilmember Esslinger is the Transportation Committee liaison. I think Jim was going to just mention it. I don't know if he had a chance to tonight. Jim couldn't make it to this meeting, but he just mentioned it. There was another, there was another issue on their agenda tonight, but, uh, that I think, did he acknowledge it, that?
He said it will be at an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, so he just gave him the heads up on it. Um, there were some other issues that some folks, you know, there were a variety of issues. The policy type of issues, I, it's, you know, it gets referred to the Transportation Committee, and it, over the years, my experience with parking issues is that it's all policy, folks. Uh, that's not to say that staff won't analyze it for you, but at the end of the day, you're going to end up making the call. And, uh, and then Councilmember Larson said something to me about, well, uh, you know, we've been talking about this for 10 years. But there have been many times we've gone to council, and councils either rejected it or studied it more. So, um, when the council's ready to make some policy changes, you know, we'll be there to, you know, explain the pros and cons. But ultimately, when it comes to parking, uh, I am more than happy to defer to the council's wisdom on that. Uh, but be careful what you ask for. So we'll be doing that. The other one that was in there that I thought was worthwhile, and, and, and Mr. Collins asked me to share this with you, the business side of the processing of to share this with you, the business side of the processing of the stuff, I think is something that we can take a look at. That's not in the code, you know, in terms of those things. And those are process improvements that I think we can continue to look at. The biggest complaint we get, and it doesn't have, it has to do with parking, but it has to do with everything, is in terms of credit cards. That is, that is an issue. And one of the challenges we have is the fee that's paid, it's not built in, I pay cash. I mean, it's, the new thing these days is you get the 3% added on to your, that's something that we might have to look at. But I know that Jim, Mr. Collins, is talking to Ms. Comas about, you know, what things we can do. And that's going to be the case with other departments as well. That is a process improvement thing that I think we can look at. And I, there was, that was embedded in the parking complaint, but it's a separate and distinct issue that is going to cover other things. So, that's, we're kind of jumping to outstanding issues, but that's kind of what we're doing. But Transportation Committee is aware of it and they're going to be looking at it soon.
Councilmember Larson.
Yeah, I was going to echo most of the same, and Jacob, I will follow up with you on parking afterwards because we can talk about it further, because I love the discussion. As councilmember Nichols said, the timeliness would be great, and I'm not saying it's not good or bad, it's just the faster we can know, the better. Because I think it is important to point out that we're not asking questions for our health or our own benefit, we're asking questions because people are asking us and you're not getting the same questions. So, we are trying to be good stewards and good conduits to our community because that's what we're elected to do. So, knowing that they're going to the right place would help a ton for us to get back to folks. Knowing what the next step is going to be would be awesome. Can city staff, if we put requests through to you, Mr. Manager, can city staff then reply to us, or do those replies go back to you and then back to us? I'm just trying to think of the timeliness, and I know you maybe can't answer decisively.
I'll talk to staff, I'll talk to staff about that, you know, and there might be another thing, because like last week was, you know, like I said, I think I told you, one of the busiest weeks of the year for me in terms of my eight-to-five workday. And I think there might be some benefit that my assistant also, you know, can shepherd it on my behalf to make sure that there's an acknowledgement. Because getting you an acknowledgement within 24 hours, no different than you order something on Amazon and says, "Thank you for your order." That's all, you just want to know that the order got in. And I think we can, we can do that. And so, I appreciate the discussion that we had on that topic.
Yep.
So, I think when you ask the questions like, that we can acknowledge in 24 hours, and I think we owe it to you guys to do that. And then we can talk internally about some of the other stuff.
Great.
Cool. Councilmember Esslinger, followed by Councilmember Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just made my two cents on this. I probably agree with the city manager about 90% of the time on contact him. I enjoy the conversations and, you know, when it comes to procedural things, yeah, I'll call him and ask him. But, you know, there are instances where, and I've talked to the city attorney, called her directly, for me, the least amount of people that I have to talk to, the better. Because as I think we all allude to, someone contacts me, then I contact the city manager, the city manager contacts the staff, and so by the time it gets back to the person you're talking, if you're lucky, hours, most likely days. So, if I have a legal question that I have, that I want answered quickly, I'm going to call the city manager, the city attorney, because she's going to not only give me an answer, but give me the right, with all due respect to anyone else, the right answer because that's her, that's her study. Just like with the, I remember I called the parks director regarding planting trees in the terrace. You know, Mr. Roloff, you have bigger fish to fry than worrying about me and trees being planted in the terrace. So, I don't want to be wasting your time calling you regarding things like that. You have, like I said, bigger fish to fry. So, in most cases, yeah, I'm going to go through you because again, I enjoy the conversations and I'll get the answer eventually, but if it's something that I need an answer to relatively quickly, I've just got to tell you, I'm not going to be shy about calling the staff.
One of the things that I talked about during orientation, and this hasn't changed either, you shouldn't be denied rights because you're a council member either. To the degree you have a question that is, that is related to general type of information, you know, I encourage you to call the departments just like anybody else. In terms of, you know, something with a tree or something like that, you know, what's the list of allowed trees? Because so many trees are getting, I mean, it's just one example. You know, yeah, you're right, and I don't have the answer about what trees. And I think there was a question in the past couple of weeks about a tree. So, yeah, to the degree it's a general question, but when you start getting into issues that can cross over into areas, that's when, you know, any department ought to be able to answer a question. If you called blindly to a department and said, you know, "I live on this address, what's my garbage day pickup?" You don't need, because I'll do, I'll end up calling them and you can get that information. I encourage you to do that. But to the degree it's regarding policy and administrative issues, you know, I would ask that you contact me because sometimes we may have already been working on it, and I do know the answer sometimes. And to the degree it involves multiple departments, that's usually where I've reconciled it with the different departments as well. So, I encourage you to do it for general information, absolutely. You're going to save yourself time and me time.
Okay. Councilmember Stevenson.
Sure. Not that I'm by any means perfect at communication, but I think traditionally, what I've done with you is I typically always copy, mark in an email, and then I'll copy in the department ad that I think is most closely associated with the issue. So, even if I'm talking with Kelly or James, I'll copy, mark in just so he's aware if he has anything to chime into. So, and then I guess on timeliness stuff, I've, we can always improve timeliness, but I've found staff to be very responsive, and I think we have a very good staff. I think you all are very responsive of citizens. And one thing I like to do with citizens is tell them, you know, "I have contacted so-and-so." I think in this world, we maybe have to give a little bit of grace to all of us. We live in a very fast-paced world, and I don't think most issues in the city don't require an immediate response. Not that I want us to be slow with it, but I think that if we give a little bit of time, most things don't need you to reply immediately. So, I'm certainly okay to work with staff and make sure that we're getting these questions answered in a timely manner, but also I'd advocate for us as council members and us as citizens to give a little bit of grace to these people that have other things going on, so.
Well, you make some good points, Councilmember Stevenson, and I echo many of those. Even when we don't intend to consume significant staff time, staff, the staff that works on behalf of the citizens of Oshkosh and work for the city manager, they respect our role in the process. They, I've never met a more professional and proud group that works tirelessly to move the City of Oshkosh forward. They're a fantastic group of men and women who do their civil service and, except help push Oshkosh forward. And they respect our role in that process and they want to give us answers. And we may not intend to create work for them when we ask them direct things or go down the rabbit hole, but it turns out, history has proven that council members inadvertently will give direction, and that's not our job. We can't. We don't direct city staff. The only one that works for, that we have direction over is the city manager. City staff work for him. He's the one that is able to, to assign or allocate staff resources appropriately. And even with the best of intentions, sometimes it starts to consume a significant amount of their days. And that's part of the concern about direct contact and how deep it can go and how fast it can get there. And most of us have no intention of those things, it just, it just happens sometimes. I've never, I mean, this is what, year six-plus for me? I've had a fantastic relationship with city staff in terms of their, and city manager in terms of their responsiveness, the timeliness. I haven't, I don't know that I've had one issue in six years that needed a immediate two-minute response type of a, you know, it had to be now. Most of those things should be going to, go into the city manager's office to begin with. But to Councilmember Stevenson's point, you know, a little bit of grace, a little bit of patience. It's okay to tell a resident, "Hey, I've got the message, we're working on it, and I'm going to get back to you." And then, you know, doing our job to get back to them. But I appreciate the topic, appreciate discussion, to make sure there's clarity. And we don't get a chance to talk about things behind closed doors. We're not, we're not at the state level and the federal level where they get, they can talk about all the topics all the time. Sometimes we got to sit up here and talk about things because this is the only time the seven of us get to do that, right in front of the camera, right in front of, you know, people in this room. So, if there's nothing else on this one, we can move on to future workshops.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge, because Councilmember Nichols talked about, I wrote timing of agenda, and Councilmember Larson also mentioned it to me. There's a lot of moving parts to that, but I think it's worthy of discussion. It's not on the agenda, but I think what I'd like to do is, with your, you know, permission, add that to the agenda for a discussion about, about the process.
Sure.
You know, there's, there's a lot of moving parts with that, but I think it warrants a discussion for the council. So, I'd be happy to put that on the next agenda.
Sounds good. Provide some clarity on that. Councilmember Flohm, press his button.
And just to echo and reiterate, city staff have done a fantastic job, and city manager Roloff as well, about answering the questions that residents have. And like Councilmember Stevenson's point, you know, offering a little bit of grace, we do live in a very fast-paced world and people expect answers very, very quickly, but everybody has a lot on their plate. So, I just want to say thank you for everything that you've been able to answer thus far, and I'm sure there will be more, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Future workshops. Underground utilities still date to be determined, staff's working on that.
Yeah, it's also listed in the outstanding issue, so we might as well kind of transition over with the whole thing. Mr. Robbie has set up a meeting with the other utilities. I don't have the date memorized, but it's within the next month. So, you know, after we meet with them, I think then we'll be able to, you know, put together a little bit more information. So, that was hurting, that group of cats was a little difficult because it's not just one utility, it's multiple utilities. So, we're working on that, and we'll keep you posted about that one as well. So, I just wanted to give you that little update on underground utilities.
Okay. Councilmember announcements and statements. Any councilmembers have something to announce?
Not an announcement, maybe more closely related to the last agenda item. I guess I just wanted to get a feel for other council members. Is anybody interested in doing any type of like ARPA-related workshop before we have this thing on the agenda where we can all kind of talk about? I know I talk about kind of how these things were graded or where council's direction kind of lies. I'm just thinking, it might be a nice forum if it's before the meeting or voting, or whenever it's going to be, it might just be a nice forum to kind of chat about those, those applications.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah. In terms of scheduling, just some questions on that. So, we're first meeting in June, second meeting in June, is there any closed sessions planned before or after at this point? Nothing that I'm aware of, but.
I'm not aware of anything for the 25th, and I just, I'm looking at my calendar. Many, if not all of you have been invited to the Reed Playground, so I think we were purposely trying not to do something.
Because that's right before the 25th meeting, right?
Yeah, it's before the 25th meeting. And I believe Mr. Collins is going to be doing a presentation. I just, I think it has something to do with transit, I just can't remember the exact, but I suggested we just do an in-meeting presentation on it, and I think it's going to take 15 minutes or so. So, that's all I had scheduled. But in terms of a workshop, you know, I think we're getting close. Out of courtesy, Councilmember Bulow asked that, you know, he goes, "I hope you're not doing anything tonight." After last week, I was unable to provide that, but I'm in a position where I'm going to be, you know, be able to make some recommendations. It might warrant a workshop. It's really about what's your schedule? We're getting close to the 4th. Do we build it into the, do we build it into the meeting on the 25th? I.
And the reason I bring that up is just because of the timing things. There's only six months left in the year after that meeting, and any more delays in terms of awarding means shorter timeframes that some of these groups have to get this money, you know, spent. A thing for me is that these dollars are spent by the end of this year. It probably is not going to be the case that that's going to be achievable, but as much as possible for me, has to be spent by the end of '24. Because if not, on December 1st, city finance department has to have enough time to flip the switch and move those funds back into the city so that we don't lose a single dime of this money. So, any meaning we push this out farther and farther and farther only shortens that potential window for people to spend. Now, like I said, there may be some of these that are, that get awarded that, that may not be achievable anyways. Because I've, you know, seen some of the applications, there's some that are multi-yeared. But for me, getting that, getting those things spent by the end of '24 is really huge for me in terms of making sure that we don't lose a dime. And I guess, if you don't mind, Councilmember Stevenson, I think we chatted about this, I guess, what's, what are you hoping to come out of that?
Yeah, so I would say, I'm a little concerned about timing too. I'd like to try to get these things approved as quickly as I can, but also with thoughtful intent put into it. So, I guess the main thing I'm trying to get out of that meeting is a little bit of consensus or idea of where we want to go with ARPA. I guess my, my fear is that if we do this during a meeting, a regular meeting, and then if we don't approve a certain amount of applications, we have to go out to another meeting to, I'd like to have the approval day be when we send this money out, we give applicants the go-ahead. So, mine is a little bit timing motivated too. I'd like this thing to, I'd like ARPA to get wrapped up as soon as we can.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yeah, I guess first is a point of clarification. We have to allocate those funds by the end of the year, we don't just spend them by the end of the year. Is that, is that right?
Yes, I think the mayor's just being a little cautious because if we allocate to somebody, we give it to, you know, ABC Group, and they, after January 1, they say, "Oh, we're not going to be able to spend it, so here's it back," or they, something happens where they can't do it, we cannot reallocate those funds after January 1, '25. So, it's technically not required, but I think the mayor's just being extra cautious, and I think our finance director is in the same camp as the mayor. I'm, you know, I don't have an issue if we know they're going to spend it eventually. And there are some groups that we may not have that issue with. Other groups that don't have a track record, I don't have, I can't look in and say, "Oh, yeah, they'll spend it, they're good for it." You know, to the, it depends on the applicant, their track record, how long they've been around. I would just much, I'm happy to answer that question. I'd rather just kind of hear what everybody's saying. I got some ideas, but I think I'd rather hear what your thoughts are first.
So, I think, I guess the second part of my, my comment is acknowledging it has to be allocated by the end of the year, acknowledging that finance director, the mayor's preference would be that it would be spent by the end of the year. I think these are exactly the conversations that would be helpful in a workshop to have, to Councilmember Stevenson's point. So, to the mayor's point earlier, we don't get to sit in a room and talk to each other about these things as a group. This is it in real time, as you see all of us nodding, we're doing it for the very first time together. And so, I think that a workshop would be helpful, acknowledging the help, the issue of timing, I don't disagree with you. I think that we could talk about which applicants, for example, city manager, we think we might have concern with the dollars actually being spent. I think that should affect, you know, whether or not they receive them. And so, those are the kinds of conversations that I think I'd like to have in a workshop, so I'd be generally supportive of a workshop as well.
Okay, yeah, and I said it was coolly, I want to hear everybody, but I.
Councilmember Esslinger has pushed his button.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Stevenson's suggestion of that workshop is fantastic. I think we have time, and as Councilmember Nichols clearly points out, we just have to allocate that. If we allocate money to someone and they don't spend it, shame on them. I mean, that's crazy. You go through all that process of putting in an application and you want that money, you're a nonprofit and you're out there, you know, for the community, you want to do some good, and then you don't spend the money? I think that's something we don't really need to worry about much. And, you know, I want to know the city manager's opinions because I respect them. I want to know how, why he chose ABC over DEF, or whatever the case may be. I still want to review all, is there a website where you can go, are these posted yet?
All of the applications are on the website.
Okay, so, forward me wherever that is. So, I, you know, and there may be times where we disagree on where that goes. And so, we're all here and we can say, "No, I don't think that should go there, it should go over here," and we can have that, we can have that debate. So, I think that's a great suggestion, to have some time together.
What I think I'd like to suggest, and is in response to all that, is taking the lead off of what you're saying about a workshop. If we can try to keep the agenda light for the 25th, kind of like we've done tonight,[1757.38] If we can try to keep the agenda light for the 25th, kinda like we've done tonight, I mean, it's only 6:50, we're, we're, we're doing great here. If we can, Mr. Collins has a presentation, but perhaps, I think I'll, I'll be in a position that what you're describing, we could do on the 25th. I would suggest that we don't make a final decision, the council doesn't make a final decision, but it's sort of, it's sort of like an ordinance where you have two readings, you know, you get the first look at it, questions, concerns, and then some direction based on initial discussion, kinda like budget. You know, we do that during the budget process and then we come back at the subsequent meeting to make final recommendations. But then, you know, to the degree it's like, well, you know, you may disagree with something that I'm recommending and you have every right to do that. I can tell you, what I'm going through is not easy. I don't wish it upon you, but if you wish it upon yourselves, I just, I say, "Be careful," but I can give you stuff and if you wanna make some changes and stuff, that is entirely council's prerogative. So, if we do an in-meeting workshop, because I don't.
I think we almost have to.
Yeah, and we'll just do everything we can to keep the agenda light so that you can, you know, roll your sleeves up and get into it. That's about the best I, and I, I certainly, somebody says, "No, I don't like that idea", I'm not offended. Just give me some thoughts about what you have.
Councilmember Flom had pressed his button too, sorry.
I would say an in-meeting agenda item would probably be something that most of us here would be amenable to. The fact that having a discussion about this like we're having now, talking about timing, talking about dispersments, talking about what we're looking for from you and essentially kind of a first pass at this kinda stuff and seeing what you've been working through because we can see all the applications, you know, everybody can take a look at those. I'm sure all of us have taken a look at them at least, you know, once or twice. But if we can kinda sit here and hash out these items that we're discussing now on the 25th, I think that would be a pretty good idea.
I'm seeing some decent head nodding, good vibes, so we'll do everything we can to keep that agenda light so we can devote time to this issue.
Councilmember Stevenson.
And just from a, like a approval standpoint, are we, I know we, I guess, when are you thinking that we'll see, so 25th, we're gonna maybe kinda do this, a little bit of a consensus building, hash a few things out? When do we think that we'll have final approval on those ARPA applications or when are you tentatively?
I would, well, like I said, out of courtesy to Mr. Bulow, I mean, I wasn't gonna be ready anyway because of last week, but I think we can be in a position that we're gonna make, you know, here's our preliminary recommendations. I'll, I'll call them preliminary.
On the 25th?
On the 25th. You can banter them around and then you can decide, are you in a position to say, "Next meeting, we're ready to go with this" or "You want more information?" type of thing? You know, I want this, I, I don't want you to lock yourselves in, but if you can get it done, the mayor's point is, the quicker we can get that out to the parties, the quicker they're gonna be able to spend it and make him happy and the finance director happy. But, you know, there are some projects that I think, you know, you, you can look at and say, "Can they get spent in '25, '26?" Yeah, I think there can be. So, we'll just take a look at those, but give you the prerogative to look at these things, we'll give you our take on why we're recommending them. And then you can make preliminary, kinda like budget, you know, we don't approve the final budget at the last workshop, but we're really close at the last budget workshop. I'm envisioning, envisioning maybe something like that, but you don't have the, you don't have the burden, you must do it on the first meeting in July. You wanna, you know, or you can say, "I like these, but I'm still uncertain about the last $200,000" or something like that. You do control it, but I think the mayor's admonition to everybody is, you know, let's not dally with it too long.
Yeah, time, yeah, that's good, yeah, time's of the essence and it's, yeah, the, the timing's coming up. It's, it's, the train's leaving the station pretty soon here.
Yeah.
Councilmember Esslinger pushed his button.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just, I guess, for clarification, Mr. Roloff, so this'll be on the agenda for next week, but you're not suggesting the possibility of an action item to vote on it, are you?
Correct. Yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting that it not be an action item on June 25th. My recommendations will be to you and you can banty them around and maybe give me some direction, questions, stuff like that. Your prerogative and if you're ready to bring it, for me to bring it back on the following meeting, whatever that first meeting in July is, then I'll bring it back at that meeting. If you wanna banty it around more, that's cool too. But workshops, while I, I'd love the concept, I also love the concept of council members being happy by not being pulled into meetings in the middle of the summer. So, I wanna respect your schedules and everything and, and staff schedules and everything else.
Right, I appreciate that. Just one other thing, so we are going to allow, when we do have the action item, so if the next meeting, you're gonna have your preliminary suggestions, then the following meeting will have an, an action item. We are going to allow all of the individuals and citizens to come up and speak to the issue, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we put any, any, that we've done up to this point, yeah.
So, be prepared, that may be a meeting.
Yeah.
And to that point.
And that's a little bit why.
Yeah.
Well, so, and there's two different, one thing, just clarification, you're gonna put it under council discussion probably next meeting? Because it's, if you put it above that, it's an action item.
Yeah.
Okay, so council discussion. Doing so, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we not do it. It's on the agenda, it's noticed, next meeting, to Councilmember Esslinger's point, any and all of those applicants and supporters could be here and should be here and they would be allowed to speak under council discussion. We've historically allowed that to occur and so, that will occur then, next meeting as well. I won't change that process. And then, as Councilmember Esslinger suggested, then yeah, that the next meeting, as any normal meeting we've done, as any ARPA approval that we've done or the past councils have done, yeah, they, they should be here and, and just in case we have questions. But it could get interesting, yes. The workshop format, Councilmember Esslinger was suggesting, workshops are for council, workshops are not for the public. They're public to view and public to listen in on and to gain knowledge, but there is very little to no interaction with the public during workshops. It's council, council's opportunity to learn. That's what workshops are all about, from, from staff to us, because we don't get those opportunities. But an in-meeting one, it's just, that's, that's the way the flow's gonna work, so just a heads up to, to that point.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to council if you wanna have public comments or not. You, you're not required to have that.
We're not, but historically, we always have and I have no interest in changing that, that practice because of this item, which, that shouldn't occur, so. Next up, city manager, the rest is yours, I think.
Outstanding issues in there, we talked about a couple of them already. I don't have anything to add with that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nichols has something though.
Yeah, thank you, sorry, just one question. I, I know we've talked about the parking thing a couple of times. I just, I guess I just want some clarification. When we brought up the, a third-party code audit, I know that your office and, and the community development office was very quick to provide a memo with history of kind of where, how we've, we've, we've gotten where we are. You've mentioned a couple of times a cautionary tale about us getting involved in parking policy as a council. I'm curious if the, if the transportation department was going to prepare a similar memo so we could see kind of where we are today, where we've been, what the conversations have been, because as you've pointed out a couple of times, a number of us are new to this bench. And so, having that background, I'm not sure if that's a standard practice or if that was something out of the norm for the code audit.
Based on the nature of the request, that's why we took a look at it and said, "Is it really the, is it the code audit or is it something else?" And it was more of a process thing. So, that's why I was like, "I think we need to get this direction first." So, in terms of this, this is a code. I mean, the parking issue is, it's all about code and what you, what you want as a council. So, I think because you have a committee that's specifically geared towards that issue, let Mr. Collins work with the transportation committee. You got a liaison, the liaison can come back. You know, council members are, if they're interested, and I didn't answer the question, council members are, you know, welcome to attend a transportation committee meeting. Mr. Esslinger's the one who's the council, the formal council liaison, but the other ones are there. If more than two of you are planning on coming, though, let us know. We can, we can double.
Could notice it.
Notice it as a council slash transportation committee meeting. That's just out of courtesy if you, if you're interested in that, but the committee, I think, because you have that committee, let them go through those issues and then, once they've got it all together, then they bring their recommendations back to you.
So, is, to that point, is your thought, I know that August 31st is the next listed on your, for an update. I know all of us have gotten many emails about parking this week. I know that the, the police department has begun increasing enforcement activities, it sounds like, downtown compared to prior. I think this is gonna get worse over the summer than it, before it gets better and so I guess I just wanna be able to provide timing estimates, because I think, I think council does have an appetite to improve the situation. So, I'm curious what you expect for actual change rather than just discussion at the transportation committee?
I don't have an answer for you tonight, but I will talk to Mr. Collins tomorrow and we'll get back to you guys.
Thank you.
You sure?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
Close enough.
Sounds good. With nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.